We'd even like to go ahead and call this meeting in order. And for everyone who can, please rise with a pledge of allegiance. And Mr. Strout will lead us in the pledge.
One diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Uh, next is the, are the, is the roll call vote. Kurt?
Chair, Joseph Diller.
Here.
Mark Strout.
Here.
John Williams.
Yes.
Janeska.
Here.
I mean, our dishes.
He's listening.
Yeah, we have town manager Tom.
Here.
Great, thank you. Uh, next are the minutes for January 10th, 2022.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from Monday, January 10th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, minutes for January 24th, 2022.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from Monday, January 24th, 2022.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Now it's time for the public address to the board. This is the time when the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting agenda or on any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask that you do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company, institution you represent. The public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments precise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. The chair that does need me answer questions on procedural matters. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when the board discusses an agenda, please make that request at this time. The board chair may grant this request. And again, address comments to the board chair and be concise. Uh, we are meeting in person, making this meeting available via Zoom for the convenience of the public. Since we're meeting in person, we will not be responsible for any technical difficulties. So if you would like to be sure of participating, please go and try to attend in person. Anyone want, wishing to address the board? Seeing none in the audience, anyone online? I see a handrail. Do they see a handrail? No, okay. No, okay. All set on Zoom? Okay, great. Who are number six, appoint your applications, Ms. Harkison?
Yes, uh, I believe Mr. Darby was unable to be here this night, um, uh, tonight, but, uh, the chair of the zoning board of appeals has recommended him for the, uh, post of an alternate member, which is in case they, they need someone who's been to all the meetings. Uh, it's, it's a very strict policy for having people present at the meetings if they're going to be voting on the final, uh, results. So, uh, they need an alternate and Caleb Darby has, um, agreed to be an alternate for the ZBA.
Great, is there a motion?
I make a motion, we appoint Caleb Darby as zoning board of appeals alternate effective May, March 15th, 2022 through June 30th, 2022.
Second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Dorye.
Uh, I would normally introduce the, uh, um, appointment of James Durie to provisional sergeant, but perhaps since we have the police chief here, she could speak to the reason for this appointment. And I believe part of that has to do with the fact that we're down one sergeant and that we need someone to cover all that shift.
I know you love this word.
Uh, I believe, uh, Officer Durie is the older one.
The older one, okay. And what's the younger Dorye's name?
This is James III.
Chief?
So for anyone who does not know Officer Dorye, he's been a member of our department since 2016. He was assigned as a K-9 handler in 2017, has his bachelor degree in criminal justice. And he's a very, um, well-respected, as you can tell, member of our department. And we are really excited to recommend him for the position of provisional sergeant. Couple of things I will say about him, he gets so mad at me when I do this and I do it anyway. He is probably the best report writer we have in our department. And he's a fantastic officer on the street and we're just really proud of him. And we're really excited to hopefully offer him this position.
Any questions from the board?
Uh, I'll just note also, if I may, that, um, this appointment is until a permanent sergeant is appointed. So it's a, it's, there's a indeterminate ending date, but there is a definite ending date.
We feel with trying to attempt to leave civil service, it's best if we do a provisional appointment for my civil service, that's how we would typically do that. So when we leave civil service, we'll be able to go through the actual promotional exam process, so.
Okay, great. Any questions from the board? If not, is there a motion?
I make a motion, we approve or appoint James Durie to provisional sergeant for a term to the date of a permanent appointment.
For a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And thank you and congratulations on the. Those are the official patches and?
Patches and badges.
Yeah.
I have them hidden in my pocket. And I'd like to thank all our officers, especially Sergeant Cowell, who's here on his 50th birthday today.
Oh, all right, happy birthday. And, uh, welcome to the club. It's not as bad as you think it is, but welcome to the club.
We're just gonna take a few pictures of it.
You want a picture?
Yeah, could you, would you mind?
Yeah, absolutely. You want a picture, you guys want to stand up and take a quick picture?
Do you mind if you want a picture of all of us together?
Sure, sure. Get the group together. Whose camera am I using? Make sure you're in the light, so.
Let's turn on the light back there.
We like high in the dark.
I'm sure you all know this.
This is the best one I ever.
Oh, I don't know any password, chief. Who is this shit, Tony? Talking about that, did it hurt?
Why?
All right, I need to get the funny one, ready?
This is the funny one?
Awesome.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Oh, the light turns on back now.
Well, thank you for that time, everybody. And again, congratulations Sergeant Dorye. Looking forward to working with you and, and supporting you on that success. Motion to open as a license in board. So, second? Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, corrections needed to transfer alcohol license from JTB and Company DBA Country Corner to RMR Enterprises Incorporated. Ms. Harkison?
Uh, thank you. Since, uh, Alyssa does the permitting, I will, uh, I will ask her to speak to this side.
Uh, yes, the ABCC sent this back with just a couple of small corrections. Um, his official name filed with the Secretary of State was not clear on some of the paperwork. Um, there was just a couple of sections that needed to be corrected, which he has done. Um, so we just need the reconsideration paper signed and we should be good to go.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we approve with the corrections made to transfer of alcohol license from JTB and Company DBA is country corner to RMR Enterprises Incorporated.
For a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. The motion recloses the license in board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second to close those licenses in board, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, number eight discussion, Memorial Day Parade and Dalton Carnival. It's exciting to hear that.
I don't know if, uh, anyone is here to present on this. I, I, I know, John, you've been involved in this.
Yes.
Perhaps you can speak to it.
Okay. As you all know, we have a traditional. Veterans Day, Memorial Day Parade on, uh, the last Monday in May. For the last two years, due to the virus situation, it has been canceled. And the Board of Directors at the Legion was interested in getting it restarted this year, but what to do wasn't certain to them. So they enlisted my help. They go to the Board of Appeal, Board of Appeals, Board of Health, and asked their views on the parade being restarted. They were very receptive, the numbers seemed to be trending down. So they took a vote by, um, it was a Zoom meeting, so they had to take a vote by members that were on screen and they approved the issuance of, uh, no, they approved the parade during the third year subject to a, I think there's a parade permit issue. Am I correct in saying that?
Yeah, we'll bring, uh, we'll bring a permit forward for it.
Yeah, so, uh, we voted and it was approved again this week. So the Memorial Day Committee, which is chaired by the Commander of the American Legion, Bob Dasson, was ecstatic over this news. Now the Carnival. There's a Carnival Committee. And it's kind of complicated because, yes, they're in charge of bringing the Carnival forward, but the grounds that the Carnival takes place on belongs to the Legion. So the Carnival Committee spoke first about taking, uh, precautions. And then the objection from the Legion commander, who said, hey, you haven't talked at all to us. We need to get this straightened about, out about what we're going to be doing for safety concerns. Uh, this is at what's scheduled to take place in the first week of, uh, June, Wednesday through Sunday. So the committee apologized to the chairman or commander of the VFW. They made up, they agreed to get together and talk about it. The Board of Health tentatively approved the Carnival, did not take a vote to approve it, but they thought the numbers were trending down and the situation looked good. And, uh, basically said, go ahead with your planning and, uh, if the circumstances change the negative for the first week in June, then we would have to take the appropriate measures. Probably mainly because the Carnival attracts sometimes 10, 15, 20,000 people, uh, Friday night for fireworks. So it's a real issue and how they're going to handle that exactly, I don't know. But the Board of Health gave them a, a nod to go ahead and plan, subject to review at a later date. They did not take a formal vote. So as far as a permit issuing goes, we're declared to issue it for the parade. As far as the Carnival goes, probably have to wait a while.
Thank you, John. That was great.
Yes, if you can, um, get me the name of those contact people, uh, or, or Alyssa, that would be great. And we can be in direct contact.
You mean the Commander of the Legion?
Yeah, and the, um, and the, and the, uh, I, I, what do you mean? Someone from the Carnival Committee as well.
Uh, okay, I will, I'll, you may add to them. I think, you know, there's people like Allison Peters is on it and, uh, Dan Downer, Assistant Fire Chief. People like that.
Whoever, whoever we should be, whoever the point person would be.
Yeah, probably here. She was there for the discussion, Allison.
Okay.
I'll get her name and, uh, a couple of other names and then, uh, I'll send you Bob Dass's email address and stuff, or email address and stuff.
You.
And if you don't locate him, I mean, I'll go find him for you. Spends a lot of time actually working over to Legion building and volunteering labor services. So I think the Sister Reen Dalton is, uh, would, are going to be happy to see the minimum of the parade coming back.
It's always a nice event.
Yep. That's Monday, uh, May 30th. And the parade will kick off from the Methodist Church on the corner of Route 8 and Route 9. And march to the Dean Street Cemetery. And then there will be a ceremony there probably at 10:00. Take approximately half hour, 45 minutes.
Fantastic, thank you, John, for that update. Uh, any other, any questions on the parade or the Carnival? Mark, you okay?
Oh, good.
Okay, awesome. Uh, move to number nine, the town hall renovation update. Come on up to the hot seat.
There's a few things. So anyways, it's, uh, it is underway. As they came through, uh, a few weeks ago, did testing downstairs and throughout the building as, you know, if there's an accident or something, they want to see what areas are, uh, that have asbestos and what areas don't. So they've already done that portion, ATC, who was contracted by Berry to do that. Uh, the other things we have got rolling is the Meerkat, who's going to take care of the bat excursion. Uh, that was going to start today, but with the weather over the weekend, they put a hold on it till next week. So they will start next Monday. And also doing is sealing up some cracks and crevices and leaving the main entrances open as, um, per law, you can't seal those off until May 1st. That's when they'll put the one-way doors on, the bats will leave when they come out for feeding after hibernation and they won't come back. Uh, they won't be able to get back in. Uh, so that portion's all taken care of. We've already, um, moved a couple of offices across the street now. Uh, so we moved on Friday, uh, tested everything on Friday. Everything was running good, a couple of small little quirks this morning, but everything's running smoothly across the street for the collector's office and for the assessor's office. So everything's good over there. Um, and I've talked with Berry Architects. They've informed me that we'll have prints, uh, somewhere around mid-April. Uh, so hopefully we can start the bidding process, uh, early May and hopefully get underway as soon as possible after the bidding. Uh, we did ask for an add alternate as a couple of the offices up in the annex, um, area up on the third floor, where the building department is and historic committee, just to give us an add alternate for that if we were to, um, do any repairs up there as well. Uh, other than that, uh, we're just waiting on, on the prints for the job.
Questions? Thank you. All set? John, you all set?
Yeah, I stopped, I was, uh, coming to the town hall today and I saw Pat go in the back there and so I jumped in and he, uh, gave me the chef's tour. And, uh, Melissa from the Town Collector's Office was hard at work over there.
Are there, are there anything that, anything you need our help with or guidance on or anything else of that nature? Just kind of wheels of motion and?
Yeah, I mean, the transit, transition went fairly smooth.
Okay.
So that was always the biggest part is getting the building up and ready and, uh, up to today's codes and everything. And, uh, once that was all set, Friday went pretty smooth for the first move over there. Um, the next move we haven't scheduled, uh, we've got it scheduled intentionally for April 15th. Um, and we're just playing it by ear as we get the prints and see where we're going to be after bidding.
Awesome. So. And we'll make announcements along the way of the different offices that are moving all over, recording, that communication.
Yes.
Post on our website or things like that.
Yeah, it's already posted on our website, Alyssa's care of that. Uh, we've got signage everywhere.
Awesome.
And then close this meeting.
Rock and roll.
That's it.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Pat.
All right? Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, moving to budgets, FY '23, Budget 139, town audit.
And you have both the town accountants, town treasurer here.
Can I stay here?
Come on up so the people at home can hear you. Sorry. Because one of the things we hear from some residents is that although Dalton Community TV does a great job, sometimes it's hard to hear, we weren't having the conversation, so.
I get it, because I can't hear you either. So which one are we starting with, 139?
I think 139 is the first one.
Okay, so that is our biannual audit that we have. We use Tom Scandlin and Associates, uh, or excuse me, now they're called Scandlin Associates, Inc. And, um, that is the price of the audit, 16.5. Um, it's $500 more than it has been for the last four years, maybe, five, six years. Um, I decided to ask for a quote for a federal single audit, which means if we spend federal money in any given fiscal year and it totals up to $750,000 or more, we are required to have a federal single audit. So that's the price for that. We have never had to have one, but with ARPA money being at a million nine, we have CARES Act money, we have Walker Brook funds, we have community development block grant where the lead town of that home improvement, that's a million three. We'll see where that goes. So if, like I said, the requirement is $750,000 in the fiscal year. If it's 659, you know, it's a 699, we don't have to.
Great.
We may have to carry that into next year too.
Okay.
Just, not the audit part, just the federal single audit part.
Yep, makes sense. Any questions? TA?
TA.
TA? Let's see, I'm kind of out of order with my packet here, but I have 152 telephone on the agenda.
I don't have that prepared yet.
Okay.
I'll have to put it out to the next time.
So hold up on that. Um, which other ones do you, do you have, Sandy?
Uh, 135, town accountant.
Okay. We'll go to 135.
So would you want to report on that now?
Sure.
Okay. So that, this basically, uh, except for the salaries. Uh, the salaries are increased by the new classification and wage study that happened. The rest of it is level funded, except for our software support agreement, um, which is a 5% increase, which that's the way that's been for, since I remember, 5% a year it increases. It's good software support that we have. Call up, you wait on the phone a little bit, but you always seem to end up getting your issues resolved. So, um, that's about all I have to say about that budget.
TA.
TA?
Um, so let's see, another budget that I have is veterans benefits, who I did talk with the DSO officer regarding this budget. And, um, he was in agreement to reduce the veterans benefits based on who is actually receiving them right now. Adding four more spots in case someone pops in. So that's what the 100,000 is for. We pay him a, a, a contracted service because he's interneumunicipal with, uh, North Adams and some other towns. So that's the price for his contracted service. And we were, a few years ago, we put in this other charges and expenses so we could update the flaps at the CRA, um, and any other kind of expenses that might occur with this budget.
Any questions?
TA.
TA? TA?
Um, Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, number 591. Um, we pay an annual assessment to them, uh, for, um, it's based on our, our population. It's just so that they can provide what our, what they provide to all the communities in Berkshire County. Um, we also added technical assistance that helps with, if we didn't foresee something we may need their help with, um, we have a budget for it. And it's been that way for a while too.
Any questions? TA?
TA.
And I think that's it from me.
Great.
Yes, that is.
Awesome, thank you. Tom, where should we go next? I got 152, oh, telephone, we're deferring to the next meeting, right?
Yeah. Dan, 449, I don't know if you got that. Test it for.
Joe, it's 182, they'll go up at Industrial Commission. That was in with this supplemental package.
Oh.
Yeah, if we can just do that one.
Yep.
Then we've done the supplemental package we've been, we've given this evening.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, 182 is very simple. It's, uh, it's a zero budget.
Yeah.
It's sort of just a placeholder for when the finance committee asks for, where's that budget? We know it's a zero budget, they'll know it's a zero budget. And the reason for that, um, and John, feel free to interject.
Real quick, there's a DRA and a DDIC, they have redundant functions. They were created at almost the same time, both as an annual town meeting. And, uh, one is slightly, the DRA has slightly more powers than that. It's charged with remediation of contaminated properties. If there was an issue somewhere, they would try to remediate it and that had been done. So because it's become complex, I'm chairman of both, unfortunately. I thought it'd be a good move to merge the two committees and take the productive members from the DDIC and move them to the DRA, expand, uh, expand the membership and have one streamlined committee for economic development in Dalton. And, uh, this is the first step. There's a article on the warrant to dissolve the DDIC, subsequently no budget. And, uh, that's pretty much it.
Yeah, the DRO is its own, it's an agency account for the town. Um, they don't really have a funding source, but the town could fund them for a particular project.
Yep.
Uh, they can get grants from the EPA.
And VRPC.
Yeah, and VRPC.
Any questions on 182? TA?
TA.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Now, I think if our treasurer, um, John Faye can come up, uh, she has 11 budgets to present.
Just a few.
The very core of the town's finances.
Which one would you like to start with?
Can we go in a miracle order?
Uh, yeah, 159 on top of my list.
145.
145, okay.
So the salary increase is due to the wage scale change. Most of my expenses are level funded, except for we need to budget for an OPEB actuarial study this year. It's every other year. And I've increased my, uh, forms by about 10% and then rounded up because of, I'm expecting vendor checks and W2s and envelopes are going to increase. And I've had to budget for a preliminary legal opinion from bond counsel for the Dalton Division Road because the authorization is over $500,000.
John, is that one tiny expense?
The, yeah, yeah.
The bonding fee?
The preliminary legal opinion?
Yeah.
Yes.
How, when the town appropriated the money, wouldn't this actually be taken back then in 2018?
Well, no, because I don't get the authorization, the, I don't get the green light letter until I'm ready to borrow. So I'm expecting that next year I'll have to borrow, so I'll have to get the green light letter then.
Got it, thank you. Lightening.
Any questions? TA?
TA.
Next is 159. Uh, this is my tax code of foreclosure, it's level funded.
TA?
Yep.
TA?
Uh, the next one is maturing debt and interest, 710. So I have three in 710, but this is just the, not the sewers and drains and not the debt excluded. So it's just a, a frame 710. So these are actual, uh, loan payments, principal and interest, except for the last two on the list, the COA van and the town hall renovations. Those are, uh, Those are things that I will be borrowing for in FY twenty three. So I've taken the cost and divided it by five years because we usually do statehouse notes and come up with an amount to budget for. The town hall renovations, we've come up with a tentative figure of approximately, to date, we've come up with about a hundred and fifteen thousand that will have been spent by the end of June. So I rounded that up to a hundred and twenty and divided that by the five years. Just to have money in my budget, so whenever we do borrow, I'll be borrowing for it this June, but I may have payments till next year.
Any questions on the seven ten?
You have to note that it's down sixty three thousand six hundred eighty two dollars. That's a big plus, we don't see much of that.
Thank you.
TA.
The next one is seven ten debt excluded. This is a really good one. Our demolition on Wolf High School will be paid off this April. So I have nothing to budget for that.
Excellent. TA?
TA.
The next one is seven ten sewers and drains. Those are just actual loan payments that I have, principal and interest.
TA?
Next budget is nine eleven. This is the Berkshire County Retirement, this is the actual bill that I've received to pay in FY twenty three. It has gone down, which doesn't happen very often, so I questioned them. And they mentioned that when larger salaries drop off in other towns, it could be, it could be a combination of larger salaries dropping off and others adding more salaries. So there's a formula that they use to assess each town. So it's good news.
Great.
Next is nine thirteen unemployment insurance, this is level funded.
TA?
TA.
Next is nine fourteen group health and dental. So we had an increase of three point eight four percent in our premiums in the medical and a two point three two increase in our premiums in the dental. The medics, I was advised to budget for an increase of five percent. It may or may not happen, but I've budgeted for the five percent increase. And I've budgeted for seven additional open enrollments. We have people aging out who will come on the insurance, we have a possible new hire, transfer station. We have open enrollment where employees can switch from their spouses to ours, things like that. And the police hire, depending on where they're at, with age and everything.
Any questions? TA?
TA.
Next one is nine fifteen life insurance. Our life insurance has had a twenty one percent increase. The reason they gave me is we have an aging demographic and we're at a ninety one percent loss ratio with them. The town does pay ninety nine percent of this. We have not had an increase since the, since the town upped the retirees from four thousand to ten thousand. So it was about six years ago maybe, so. And I did get a two-year rate guarantee with this, too, so it won't go up next year.
Great, thank you. TA?
Nine sixteen is the Medicare budget, that's due to the wage scale changes.
TA?
Nine nineteen is employee fringe benefits, level funded.
TA?
Nine forty one is judgments and claims, it's level funded.
TA?
TA.
Nine forty five is county assurances. My budgets here have increased. So in previous years, I've tried to pare down my budgets just to get them tight. And last year, the increases were more than I had budgeted for. So bottom line, I had enough money, but I kind of needed to up that. So what I did was I put the premium that I paid on there, and then I budgeted a five percent increase on that premium. Our storage tank also went up due to the fact that it's thirty years old. So there increased our premium.
Just a question out of curiosity, I don't know if Thomas' question is for you or not, but the police accident insurance, do you think we, chief is going to go through accreditation process, which is more policy procedure driven, does that have any impact on our police accident insurance programs at all?
I do not know that.
Okay.
I'm trying to find that out.
Okay, just curious, that's all. Okay, thank you. TA?
TA.
My last budget is commission of trust funds, nine fifty, that's level funded as well.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you for the great work that you're doing, I really appreciate it. Next. With the highway and sewer, Tom?
We do have an amended highway budget that now includes salaries, based on the best current information, which is probably good going forward. That, so this is really more or less for your information.
Okay.
It has everything filled out, which is the last one.
Any questions on the highway salaries? TA?
The sewer budget also now has salary, if you're saying.
Okay. TA?
As does the cemetery.
TA.
Thank you for joining, Brooke.
Tom, does this mean you concluded negotiations with the highway union?
Concluded is too strong a word.
Wow, wow.
Yeah, the transfer station?
Transfer station? Transfer station?
Oh, transfer stations?
Yeah, this is not entirely satisfactory because as you'll notice, there's, there's a very detailed sheet for the projected transfer station budget. And we have that on as a discussion item. And I'm wondering if we should take this up after that discussion.
You want, you want to combine with that, that would be fine. There's no objections, we can do that.
And we do not have VRPC or vocational education numbers at this time, to the best of my knowledge.
I did VRPC, five nine one, is that the one?
Yeah, we did that. Oh, okay, sorry.
What was the other one?
Vocational education.
No, we do not have that yet, and we do not have sewer treatment, which is four four nine. We just got the city control, four twenty one, last two weeks ago.
So unfortunately, we'll have to meet again, I'm proposing next week, to go over the straggle budget.
And with that, we want to move to number one.
Yes.
VRPC's upcoming update to its five-year comprehensive economic development strategy. And we have a guest with us this evening, on Zoom, a patient, yes.
Hi. Can everyone hear me okay?
We can, yeah.
Great, great. And I think I should be able to share my screen, I was told.
Hold on one minute.
Okay. In turn, I'm going to just put a link in the chat. This is a link to the page on VRPC's website where you can read the past SEDS report. Is everyone familiar with what I'm calling the SEDS, which stands for Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Report? Are people familiar with that? Yes?
Some are, some are not, it's kind of a mixed group.
Okay, all right, well, this presentation will be an introduction, a very short introduction to what is a very complex document that VRPC has been putting together since two thousand and eleven. I'll just introduce myself and then I'll share my screen. I noticed that someone may be the host, and I'm just a little bit concerned because if I'm the host and I leave, the whole meeting will end. So I will just, I will stay on until the end of this, the meeting, and I'll just mute myself so that normally I think I would need to be a co-host so that I could leave without there being disruption. But in any event, my name is Wyney Goodman, and again, I'm a senior economic development planner with the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission. I work with Laura Brennan, who many of you may know, she is the economic development program manager. I've been with VRPC since just May of two thousand and twenty one, so I'm a bit new here. So please, my apologies if I make any errors in some of my understanding. And part of the reason I'm here is to learn from you. And what I'll be doing again in this brief presentation is just explaining what is happening this year with a five-year update to the SEDS report, and specifically the section that I have been brought in to assist with, which is the resiliency chapter. So in past years, VRPC's SEDS report has included mention of resiliency in a brief kind of way. But given the impacts of COVID nineteen, the federal government has made it clear that they want all future SEDS reports, and starting with this one, to really expand fairly dramatically the resiliency section. So with that, I will share my screen. And, but as a slideshow from the beginning. Okay, can everyone see that okay?
Yes.
Okay, great, just going to minimize myself. So for those who are not familiar with it, to understand what the SEDS report is, again, it's a document VRPC has been providing to the federal government through the Economic Development Administration since two thousand and eleven. And it's both a, but it's really an ongoing process that gathers regional partners together to agree upon economic development goals for Berkshire County and create a strategy for how these goals will be achieved. So the SEDS are first certified by EDA as a five-year look ahead, and then every year thereafter, there are shorter annual reports. On January twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty two, EDA approved VRPC's request for designation as an economic development district. And that's a special designation that recognizes the region's demonstrated enthusiasm and confidence in partnering with EDA to pursue these mutually held goals of regional collaboration around economic development and innovation-driven economic growth. So it serves as a foundation for future economic success to benefit families and businesses in the region. And these, what you see on the screen are the goals that were set out in the last five-year SEDS report that VRPC drafted. So the SEDS tracks things like regional economic conditions and trends. We do a SWOT analysis looking at strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats in the region. We look at performance measures that evaluate how we're doing in terms of achieving regional economic goals. And we start to assess, again, as I'm, as mentioned, my particular role is looking at our economic resilience. So that's things like planning, information networks, communication, pre-disaster recovery planning, and resiliency measures that make sure that the region could handle not just what happened in COVID, but future economic threats to the region that could, that serve as economic shocks, if you will. So on this first page, what you're seeing are just examples of three projects that were identified in the last five-year SEDS report that were, that we categorize as being the region's greatest needs. So those are things like connecting high school students to internships, creating an education to employment stem pipeline for our youth and young people, as well as career changers, and ensuring broadband for all because we know, and we've certainly seen during COVID, how critical it is that we have stable, reliable, and fast internet to serve all the people of the county and our businesses. And as you can see here, we, and I'll talk about it in the final slide, really, the way that we are conceptualizing resilience for this new version of the SEDS report that will be due at the end of two thousand and twenty two, we are capturing resilience in terms of three categories, people, community, and economy. Now, these three projects, and again, they're just examples, there's longer lists for all of the categories I'm showing you in the slideshow, these are just examples. These are programs that we think if they were enhanced, meaning if there was, if they were funded, rather, they would enhance the region. So these are building on assets that we already have, but taking them to the next level. So one of those is growing the future food economy. Another is the Berkshire Skills Cabinet, which we work on in collaboration with Mass Hire. And then the Berkshire County Digital Economy Build to Scale, which again, we're working on with One Berkshire, making sure that again, we have a workforce that is trained and ready to be able to perform digital economy work, not just for local businesses, but as well as we, again, have seen during COVID, so that they could live in the Berkshires and work remotely for companies anywhere in the country or even the world. Lastly, we have projects that enhance the region by improving our physical infrastructure. And as you can see, there's a Dalton project listed on this slide, the Crane Stationery Mill. We try to identify physical infrastructure capital projects that touch all regions of the Berkshire, so north, central, and south. And we look for projects, again, that will enhance the region by creating good-paying jobs and improve physical assets that are in disrepair and put them to productive use. So the kind of SWOT analysis that we're doing around resiliency is again, looking at some of the issues that arose during COVID, like a need for childcare, as well as resiliency factors or indicators that we knew existed prior to COVID, like the fact that the Berkshires need to ensure that we have a diverse set of industries in the region, that we attract entrepreneurs. Because if we don't do that, then we have an economy that relies on one or two large employers, as you all well know, from, you know, GE in the past and, and things like that, where if those large employers leave, the region is really going to be hurt. So ensuring that we have bringing in and attracting a diverse set of industries from a diverse set of sectors, not just hospitality, not just, you know, tourism, which everyone associates with the Berkshires, but again, digital economy, value-added food products. Something that we're talking about now is bio-manufacturing, sorry, advanced manufacturing, biopharmaceuticals. These are industries that we think, there's strong presence of those sectors on the east side of the state. And we want to create a pipeline of connectivity between students coming up in the western part of the region, the schools that they attend, and ensuring, again, that if they choose to live in this region, they can do that work from, from home or from new companies that are startups here. So the next steps in terms of the SEDS are things like interviews with town administrators, presentations to select boards, like I'm doing now and I'm doing throughout the region, surveys that we're conducting, and interviews with representative people from different economic sectors, like our creative economy, like healthcare, like food security. We also have monthly meetings of our SEDS committee, and we are pleased that someone from Dalton, Tom Hutchinson is a representative on both the SEDS committee and our SEDS resiliency working group. We also have monthly meetings with One Berkshire on technical assistance to businesses. We then will draft the SEDS report and this expanded resiliency section and share it with towns for feedback, because we really want it to be grounded, not just in our kind of pie in the sky or sort of high-level interpretation of what we think is going on, but really based on the actual stories that we hear and, and data that we gather from towns themselves. So what we're looking for from you are, just like it says, compelling environmental or economic resiliency stories from the last few years, locations in your town that you think represent areas of strength, weakness, opportunity, or threat, your feedback on the priority projects, how you think they will address economic challenges in Dalton. And then last but not least, checking in on your ARBA allocation and how the town is positioned to manage that ARBA allocation, if it needs any assistance from VRPC. is positioned to manage that ARBA allocation, if it needs any assistance from BRPC in making decisions about that allocation, or, on the other hand, how that money is managed and administered. Because we're very well aware that for towns, and I think Dalton is not, you know, you guys are very well-resourced and you have a really strong municipal sector, I think, in terms of your select board and town administrator, because you are one of those kind of gateway or sort of suburban to urban and rural connector towns. But for smaller towns where they may not be as well-resourced, we want to help those towns make sure that they are well-placed to administer the grant, to do the record-keeping needed, so that when the federal government comes back and asks for how their ARBA money was spent, they're able to easily and effectively report on that. These are four questions that I'm going to be, they're in this presentation that, that you may have received, and if not, I'm also going to be sending them out after this presentation. And we'd love your responses to these four prompt questions, giving people about 30 days to think about them and hopefully respond to them. And we will use the, the answers that you provide, again, to inform how we, as we get answers back from the 32 towns in the Berkshires, looking for commonalities. Because again, we're, the SEDS report is something that has to speak to the entire region. We're not going to be able to, you know, address the issues of every single, you know, individual town in terms of, you know, answering each town's particular challenges. But what we are going to do is look for commonalities, look for a through line, and share those in the narrative. And certainly, when we can, like a project like Crane, the Crane Mill Project, certainly look for opportunities to enhance or fund priority projects that are appropriate to Dalton. Again, this is the resiliency framework that we're using. It comes from a rural economist named Brian Daxson. And we've borrowed and stolen and think that his very simple model of starting with resilient people, which feeds up to a resilient community and then a resilient economy, is a framework that is easy for people to understand and that makes a lot of sense. And so that's all I have, and I'm going to stop my share and just take any questions if you have.
Excellent presentation, Wiley. That was very comprehensive and thoughtfully put together, so thank you for that. I'll defer to board members. Any questions at all?
The question's going to be emailed out to select board members?
Yes, correct. I'll email that to Alyssa, and she can distribute them.
How best we want to coordinate the feedback of those questions internally directly to you or over to Grant or to kind of, those, those four questions actually presented on that list?
Well, I think I'm open to whatever feels right to you. You know, you can certainly send them directly to me, or if you'd like, you know, give them to Grant first and Tom to look at, and then they can send them, that's fine, too.
You want to send a consolidated view, or do you want to kind of send four people with eight different opinions probably? But what do you think? What do you think's best? I'll put you on the spot, right?
Yeah. I guess I'll maybe announce something or...
Right. I think a diversity of opinions is good.
Yeah, I agree.
Sorry. I don't want to, you know, have anybody feel that there's some sort of a reducing valve here.
No, no, just themes, like if there's general themes or not, if there's things that kind of pop up as outliers or whatever the case.
It would be good for us to know your thoughts on that.
Yeah, okay. All right. We'll share those with both of you, and then we'll take it from there. Okay.
Great. All right, thank you all so much.
And Wiley, what's your timeline on those questions? Back to you. Sorry, I may have missed that.
Um, 30, 30 days is fine.
Okay. Mr. Boyle?
Great.
No, I just didn't.
All right.
Thank you for the update.
Yeah, that was great.
Thank you. Take care.
Next is the Town Planner update. Hey, Grant.
So I guess we'll start with the busiest board as of recently. The planning board's had a busy couple of months. In addition to its regular monthly meetings, two public hearings were recently held for zoning bylaw and zoning bylaw amended proposals. The planning board will be submitting the final text of the proposed accessory dwelling unit bylaw to the select board after deliberations at their regular monthly meeting on the 16th. This is 21 days after the February 23rd public hearing on the matter, and that's in accordance with the timeline specified in Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5. The planning board will be submitting the drive-through bylaw amendment proposed by the DDIC and the DRA to the select board. They met on March 10th, and the public hearing was held. There's a couple of points that the board wants to see hashed out before we submit something final. We'll have 21 days from the 10th, so by the end of the month, that will be into the select board. A DLTA request was submitted to BRPC for master planning assistance. The planning board is tasked with periodically updating the master plan, and Dalton's current master plan is approaching six years without being edited. So we submitted that to Tom Matuzko, and I've heard back that we'll have a planner in contact with us soon for that technical assistance. The ADU Subcommittee of the Planning Board has met to approve the last of its minutes by this point. The Subcommittee was tasked with adopting the language for the proposed ADU bylaw. In this effort, members researched the benefits of allowing zoning for these units and how those benefits may apply to Dalton. Language from several nearby municipalities, ADU bylaws, in addition to the AARP Model Bylaw, provided guidelines in the text, will be and is being amended to fit the desires of Dalton residents as expressed at the public hearing. And as received via written communication between the dates of February 23rd and the last date being March 16th, to get those comments in, the Subcommittee will be dissolved as daily in its charge following the vote at town meeting, the vote on the ADU bylaw town meeting. The Board of Appeals, tonight nominated an alternate, Caleb Darby. He'll be on the board through June 30th, and after this date, the board plans to nominate Caleb for another term. Outside of that, business is generally as usual with the Board of Appeals. The DRA recently submitted its proposed drive-through bylaw amendment to the planning board. We've sort of gone over that. The final text is, will be being approved and into you by the 31st, and again, will be on the walk for town meeting. As John touched on earlier, the DDIC is planned to be dissolved at town meeting. Membership has been inconsistent, and there's no longer thought to be a need for the commission. Active members of the DDIC will be transferred, uh, DDIC will be transferred over to the DRA. Additionally, there's a few new businesses popping up in town. Former Bergner property has two new businesses moving in. The lot was recently subdivided. Shire Donuts and Downswing Indoor Golf Center will be moving in. The golf center will be open in the winter months, the colder months anyway, November to April, beginning in November of 2022. The donut shop is presumed to be open year-round. I don't think, I think John Medjewski hasn't seen anything going on there quite yet, but we, we hope they'll be open soon. During the, excuse me, Zinkie's Pub is also open, and I guess they've seen good business to date. I Berkshires and the Berkshire Eagle have reported on both Zinkie's, I guess all three, the donut shop, Shire Donuts, and Downswing Indoor Golf Center. It also appears that Dalton HD Pizza, as I was told, HD stands for the owner's initials, will be opening in the Greenwich Plaza. Agnes Wukowski with the Board of Health actually conducted a health inspection there today, so that's good news as well. The Green Dalton Committee is strategizing energy efficiency upgrades to the town hall building, response times to energy audits, and recent labor shortages, a number of situations that have recently had made timing for the Spring 2022 Green Communities Grant difficult. The committees on track to apply for a fall grant round for primarily what we're thinking now is insulation HVAC improvements. The order of the improvements is important to, in terms of both sound engineering and construction practices, and to submit the most competitive application possible to the Green Community staff. BRPC is providing assistance in this as well, to the Green Committee in gathering data, or sending data back and forth with a planner over there, and structuring future grant applications. Pat Pettit's been a tremendous help to the Green Committee. He's walked contractors through the building, organized the necessary improvements in a time-sensitive and cost-effective manner. He's consistent, that is consistent with engineering and construction best practices. So it's, I wouldn't be able to do those meetings without Pat. The Open Space and Recreation Committee has taken on the challenge of improving the pines as their first item. That addresses objective 1.5 of Dalton's current master plan, which is, quote, "to develop and maintain the pines." So some future steps on the area that the committee has in mind. It's an invasive species removal day that's being coordinated between Taylor Staubek, who is chair of the committee, and I believe the Huzetonic Valley Association. And there is also a potential partnership for a Mass Trails Grant with a group, Green Agers. They're in Egremont, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, based nonprofit on South County. They specialize in outdoor recreation work, and they provide local teenagers with summer jobs. And so Wakona students, I imagine, will be prioritized, in addition to, they have mentioned Pittsfield and the other member communities of the Central Berkshire Regional School Yeah, so we've been in contact with Elliot Del Maleno over there. That Mass Trails Grant is currently closed. The next round will be open in February, I believe, of 2023, or that's when applications will be accepted anyway. The effort, the main focus of that grant would be an effort to make a section of the Trail EDA compliant, which would be a tremendous benefit considering the trail has close proximity to the senior center. Could open up, that's right back there, could open up some walking groups based on activity level of seniors. It's also, I think it's, it's on the Appalachian Trail as well. There's a stretch that runs from Debo Street up that way towards Park Avenue, so that's something to consider. I think that covers it. The last piece is that Glenn Ligerwall is on the OSR Committee. He's also chairman of the North Mountain Park Advisory Committee, and so he's been providing some updates at meetings periodically on that project. Conservation Commission has finalized their Dalton Municipal Wetlands Protection Proposed by Law that's been forwarded to the town manager for inclusion on the draft town meeting warrant. Some members of the Conservation Commission recently attended, attended the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commission's virtual annual environmental conference. The commission expects to be busier with the spring hunts approaching. And additionally, Dalton is required to update its stormwater mapping as part of the town's MS4 requirement. I've been coordinating with Bud and Courtney Morehouse at BRPC, a sort of a trial day to see how long this mapping, what all goes into it, how long this would take. Because we've been given the option of hiring, I believe, their UMass Amherst interns, their interns at a local school, to complete the field work. And I believe Cheshire and Lansbury have decided to take this approach of hiring the interns, because they have to fulfill the same requirement Dalton does. The interns would be given a $6,000 stipend from the town of Dalton specifically, split between fiscal years '22 and '23. So I'm basically, to that point, stating I'm capable of doing the field work as well, if we want to save ourselves some money. The trial day will serve to provide a timing estimate and help determine if there will be a need for interns. So regardless of if the interns are hired, the field work and mapping will take place during the summer months, and that trial day is slated for a date in early April.
Look, fantastic update. I mean, you went through a lot there, and there's a lot to unpack, for sure, but thank you for all the great work you're doing and your team's doing. Was that four new businesses at town, John?
Uh, Downswings, it's Shire Donuts.
Downswings?
Yeah, that's the new building. The donut thing is Shire Donuts. It's a boutique donut, specialized donuts. They have one branch in Adams now, and they're branching out and bringing one to Burgers, Burgers Farm. But it's supposed to open in March, and I have seen no activity down there. I'm kind of disappointed in that.
Yeah, there was a story that they do in some construction site, like some...
And the golfing thing is seasonal, right?
Yep.
Yeah, that'll be, those things, they got fancy screens in there, and they, people who, who can't stand to not golf.
Two of my favorite things, golf and donuts, so I'll be there and play often, so.
And the new pizza place. I was talking with Grant about this today, and something occurred to me. Yet premise has a in-place, functioning, paid-for, up-to-date, all-alcoholic liquor license on premise. And I'm not sure who the proprietors are, because it is this different entity than the current holders of the license. It's going to require a license transfer. And I would ask Alicia, she'd be the first to hear about these type of things. Is there any, any noise about that license?
Agnes gave them my contact information, and I haven't...
Yeah.
Maybe we can review that for our next meeting and just kind of check.
Yeah, because the guy, well, I shouldn't say the guys that own the Patty store. There's somebody that owns the whole building, the complex. I don't think they actively worked there. I don't know exactly how it's set up. But I think they hold the license in the former premises, Pizzano's Pizza, I think that's what it was named. And they, it's been vacant for like four years. But they religiously pay for the license every year, kept it in force, and never used it. Yeah, it's a small thing, but if it's a different entity, the license has to be transferred.
Good catch. So if we can look at that in the next agenda, we can kind of review it, so please.
I'm sure Jim and Jingle are pretty easy guys to get along with, they tell you what's going on.
That's great. Any questions for Grant?
Grant, could you email it to us? So we can have that. The...
Are you here for that?
Yes.
Yeah. Cause I'd like to push some of that out of social media to just general updates and whatnot.
Okay. I could make it an actual point to put it on my page on the website.
Yeah, just as always, because just throw out some updates ourselves and different things that are going on. So it'd be great, it's great to kind of review it.
If we talk about economic development, one of the many things that Grant may have overlooked, because he's not directly involved in it, he's one of the administrative functions for various committees. But yes, this, the stationary factory on Lansbury Avenue, as you all know, got to get $680, $6,000 grant. But because of construction costs and mostly construction costs, well, now within, instead of being seven or $800,000, is almost $2 million.
Wow.
And hence, nothing that has happened before, but it's by understanding that the perspective occupier of the present, of the presence on the whole, total second floor, and Steve Sears and his entity are going to, in effect, split the difference or split the remainder in this thing. Will go into reconstruction soon and hopefully be occupied by this new entity by the end of the year. Yeah, it kind of stalled there. Construction costs have skyrocketed.
That's good news, they're getting creative around though, in that partnership.
Yeah. So they are being real creative, because they thought that grant would cover 90%. And it's not, it's covering the ball.
It's a moving target, construction costs, yeah. Awesome. Well, thank you so much, Grant.
Thank you.
Mr. Ferguson, the transfer station.
Yes. I sent out a variety of...
Do you want to come up here and talk?
Of accounting things. There's a projected, if we could first look at this projected transfer station budget FY 2023. This is what I think people have been looking for for, for some time, is a very detailed cost accounting of what it would take to run the transfer station. That said, it's not, it's not a formal budget like, like the budget piece you got, because things that are on here, like the $20,000 for attended benefits, those appear somewhere else in the Dalton Town budget. But this is, this is the complete picture of what it costs the town to run that. So I thought that would be a good place to start, because we've been, we've been wondering about that. That said, a number of these, these numbers are estimates. We hope, I think it's a conservative budget. We've put in more here for expenses than we actually expect to pay. We put in less in income than we expect to get. But we do now have good figures for some of the things that, that have been going on over the last year. For example, the bulky waste, we have it in here for $30,000 of income. It actually brought in $35,000 last year. So that's an example of a conservative estimate, but something that's, you know, in, in the ballpark, in, in the good ballpark. in the good ballpark. And one thing that the income does not include is a recycling-only sticker. We have no idea how much that might bring in. So we didn't really want to include that, because that would be just a guess.
So that'll be just net positive income if we do a recycling-only sticker?
Yes. So we did find out costs for the liability insurance, for workers' comp, there's an annual inspection fee, there are signs we have to put up, the bonding is in here, they have to pay for stickers for bags and stickers for cars, which are relatively, relatively inexpensive. But they're expenses, so we know about them, so we put them in. So it, this, especially the addition of the bulky waste fees was something that made a huge difference. We knew that they were getting, that currently there's a lot of income being generated, and we finally did nail down what those numbers are. So this is, this is how, this is the picture of why we think that it's a good deal for the town to take it over, that we're not going to lose money. That said, there are caveats. As everyone knows from the recent Eagle article, the landscape is shifting, and it may be that trash disposal gets more expensive. It may be that there's more local competition for individual, individuals to dump their trash. We don't know exactly how that's going to play out. I would say that there's still a public interest in the town running the transfer station, because the town doesn't have an interest in sort of maximizing the waste that comes through, that as a matter of public policy, or, you know, we can say we want to reduce waste, and we want to funnel it off into, into different sectors as much as possible, which may not be in the current model as a way to move forward. So I think that, from my perspective, even if we were just barely breaking even according to these numbers, I would, I would still say that it was in the public interest for the town to take it over and promote recycling and reuse and the swap shop. Interestingly, we got a, we got a solicitation from a group that wants to put in a textile recycling facility, because textiles are going to be the next thing that we can't throw away. And they will also take small household items, and that's great, because if you had a swap shop and things didn't move, we would have a place to put them instead of throwing them in the regular trash to take away as well. Also, I think there's, there's more potential for scrap metal. If we put in town scrap metal as well, we'd boost that number, and this is based on about 10 tons going out.
So you know...
Yeah, I think that's right, and I think we could very well generate more if we included town metal as well.
So conservative income, overestimate a cost, so conservative on that too, that the costs are higher than projected, kind of a buffer zone there, so even with that, that's a little more buffer on the bottom line of P and L. I know, Mr. Lord, last time we talked about this, you had a lot of specific questions. Is it going to get to those?
Well, a lot of the, listen, look, I've got it right here, my own cause analysis, which I did two months ago, and just closely follows it. You've done a great job, Tom. You incorporated things like workers' comp, the surty bond, if you have to handle money, blah, blah, blah. I noticed one thing here, the yard waste attendant for $10,000 salary. Now, that isn't really in the transfer station, they've always been separate operations. But now that we're going to take over the transfer station and we operate the brush pile, that is probably shouldn't be considered the transfer station brush pile budget.
And they're, and they're open the same hours, I understand, so, 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 yeah, and that's something that Bud did with his highway budget.
So that's, you added that, and you still covered the cost. Another thing I noticed that I looked at was cost for replacement labor. You know, this guy, guy, girl, gal, it may be the attendant, it's certainly going to be out for sick days and vacation days, et cetera, et cetera. So possibly something should be cranked in, like most budgets, for something to cover his vacation.
Well, we wouldn't be hiring someone to do that. It's more of an opportunity cost that we would, we would lose a highway crew member for a day.
Yeah, that's what's going to happen. The guy falls in sick, but he's got to take one of his employees and send them over.
So that's an opportunity cost, but it's not a financial cost, because we're not paying more money.
But we're losing out on a labor operator for one day for Bud.
Yes.
Okay.
Just as the same as if someone was sick, we wouldn't hire somebody to cover a regular crew member if they were out sick.
And the other thing I would just mention, Jason, that I understand there's a multitude, a pile of paperwork that's going to come to us taking over this operation, that Cassola now does in their home office in Cheshire, right? So who's going to end up doing that? I'm guessing Bud's administrative assistants. So we may have to extend...
That is absolutely right.
Yes, she's going to have to have her hours extended.
It's, it's a lot of work looked at annually, but what it really is, is putting in, you know, 15, 20 minutes every day, every day of the year, to put in all the data we need in order to be able to report out what we need to report back to the state. And we are fortunate to have a really good state consultant. There used to be Veronique Blanchard, I don't know if any of you ever worked with her, but it's now Susan Wade, and the state provides consultants to towns. Western Mass has Susan Wade, and I was just on the phone with her today, and I'll be meeting with her on Wednesday, to talk more about some of these issues. And, and she, you know, she's very clear-eyed about this. One of the things she said was, you know, we don't know what's going to happen. Well, right now it's very difficult to dispose of mattresses. The only places we can take them are Albany, or the closest places, there's a place in Albany, there's a place in Connecticut, and then Garter. So that's a long haul for trucking mattresses, because they can't be thrown away now, they have to be recycled. And there's an effort to come up with a cooperative sort of mattress center somewhere in Western Mass to, to deal with that, but that's, those are upcoming issues, and as a town, we will now have to deal with those issues instead of farming it out to another operation. Again, I think this gives us an opportunity to educate our residents and try to reduce our waste and deal with as much as we can locally, not necessarily mattresses, but certainly compost, for example, another, another very heavy component of solid waste that some towns are diverting into agricultural, agricultural operations. So there are opportunities here as well as the potential pitfalls. And again, as a matter of public policy, I just, I think it's a good idea if the town provides education and incentives for people to reduce the waste stream. Yeah, it means we get less money in sticker fees, but it's good for the town. So, you know, we're not a profit-making operation, we don't have that, all we have to do is break even. So I think the public policy goal of reducing waste and refining how we, how we deal with it is, is another reason to go forward with that plan.
And there's also, I think, probably a better, improved opportunity to engage other community members, such as a local high school, you know, as far as the green committee programs they have, to help educate and volunteer in that space of the transfer station as well, to further educate our constituents and residents.
I'd love to see it become a vibrant center in the town of community interaction and some education and a playground and whatever.
Kind of this works out the way you projected it, should indicate that there will not be an increase in sticker price comes July first.
Oh, yes, yes, I think that, you know, that is a no-go.
Because it's taken a dramatic leap in the last four years, as I've said before, you know, forty, forty-some dollars. But, and that's great, people, consumers over there, customers, will be glad to hear that. Just one other thing, it's a great figure for leasing the equipment. That's a tremendous figure, and that's definitely the way to go. We didn't want to get, I don't think at this point in the game, get into purchasing our own equipment, which would have been a considerable...
Yeah, we, we're certainly not going to do that for FY23.
No, no, okay.
Yeah, and it is a good figure, we're very happy to see that.
And what is, do you see equipment? Does that include, what does it include? I mean, you need more than just the stuff that's there, you need all the containers for the side stuff.
Oh, yeah, it's the containers, the compacters...
Everything that's there now?
Yeah.
That's great, that's a hell of a deal.
I believe it includes the chute.
The, where's that rental? Which one is that?
It's like the chute, the compacters 9600.
Yeah, the 9600 is the two compacters, the chutes, and those two dumpsters. They go with, you know, the ones with the ramp, the closed top.
That's cardboard and trash.
Yeah, cardboard and trash. It runs those to the open tops we rent, which is another, which might be the leasing equipment. Those are ones we rent from them already, those other ones. But that's where we have, we have $28,000 set aside already in an account for the transfer station, which if that's something we start buying our, our own dumpsters, which I got quotes, I believe, around $6,500 for a dumpster. For a 30-yard and a 40-yard, a 72, I believe.
Those are open tops.
Open top ones, but we could start getting our own, you know, we just got to have them of our own.
Yeah, because we're going to need a few of those around there.
Right. You know, if we're going to start having our own recycling-only sticker, if we put it to the side like that, design or whatever, we'll have to get a couple of them.
And they also have some overflow dumpsters, you've seen in the back, so...
Yeah, for the cardboard, yes. And they use them occasionally. Paper thing jams up, I've seen a Nintendo crawl in there because it was jammed up. And people, other times it was shut down, people had to put their cardboard, recycling old paperwork in those two dumpsters, and they're going to remain there.
Yeah, that's good.
Art, do you have any questions on this?
No, I think they've been answered.
What's the, if you can share, what's the transition plan? Is this a this-year thing, or is it a transition process for the current provider? If you can get into those details, if you can't, that's okay too, because I know you negotiate things like that.
Yeah, we're, we're in the midst of negotiating with Cassola, we're waiting for them to forward their latest proposal. We gave them the new prevailing waves last week, so it's a little early to expect a proposal, but we do expect one soon from them. And, you know, the good news there is that the, the cost of the drivers is going down from about $49 to an hour to about $28 an hour. So not quite half, but almost.
Pretty close.
And so that's, that's great news. On the other side, you know, if Cassola turns, you know, community eco-powering our transfer station, then that's, then they'll be charging whatever they charge there, and it, you know, that could take business away from, that could take sticker fees away from, from the Dalton Transfer Station.
But we'll react to that when we, when it's happening, right?
But we'll make our place more fun to go.
That's right, that's right, it's competition.
I hate to be like Jane now.
Yeah, welcome to competition, you know? I think we, we watch as far, so tonight, you need a C A on the budget, but you also need a vote to approve to move forward with this plan, is that your ask for Stephen?
Yes, and, and the budget is based very much on last year's budget. With the addition of the attendance, it's, it's a bit of a hybrid, and that's why it's going up so much, because it's including the attendant and the yard waste attendant. It includes paying for the Waste Management Recycling Coordinator, $4,500. Normally that should be paid from a grant, but we're not guaranteed of that, so that's why that's in there. So it has salary in it, that's as though we're going to take over, but the expenses are all, I mean, yeah, the non-salary expenses are all based on staying the same.
Yeah, FY22, 23.
Yeah. So it's, you know, if, we're having to sort of do both in one.
Yes.
And it's a bit of a hybrid with the salaries in here. So we could actually, could actually approve without the salary. Well, we'd want the coordinator in there, we want the yard waste attendant.
At this point in time, can we just approve the general concept?
Sure.
Of the town taking over the operation?
Yeah, yeah.
Until some point in time, you have an actual budget, because as you said before, a lot of these costs are already covered in other budgets.
Yeah.
Worked discount, fringe benefits, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, and I can...
So just at this time, we just vote to approve the overall concept?
Okay, so, so if we approve the overall concept, I can make this look like this for the budget for next year.
Okay, so is a motion to...
Now, that said, this is all dependent on actually executing the contract with Cassola for another year, so...
In, in the targeted days, July 1st?
Yes.
This year?
And, and we're already looking into paying online and where else we might, we might have stickers available and all of those sort of infrastructure items as well.
You mentioned one of your prior cafeteries that you would be able to purchase stickers or bags at the premise.
That's right, what you would be able to do is present a receipt from your online payment and, and get your sticker there. So, so if you paid online, it would say you want to print the receipt, print the receipt, take that. That way we don't have to worry about bonding the...
So you buy your bags online, and you get a receipt, and take it over there, and they give you the bags?
Well, again, we're hoping not to, not to waste plastic. So the plan is to have stickers that go on people's regular trash bags. So you just have a regular trash bag, and you put a sticker on it, big fluorescent sticker, so that you can tell that it's been paid for.
Yeah, I don't know, that's a good idea. I think people like the way it's conducted right now. I mean, it is all kinds of issues, different-sized bag, density of bags.
Yeah, yeah, there's, well, I must admit that I'm used to the experience in Greenfield where there is a sticker system for bags, and there's a red one for, a bright pink one for small bags and a bright green one for big bags.
I'm seeing more sticker systems than bag systems.
So, so it's just, it's just buying and wasting a small amount of material instead of a huge bag. It'd be a lot cheaper.
For me, it's bringing my regular-sized trash bags to the dump and my old plastic bag, I'm not using, because it's inconvenient to go get the bags, replace one, figure out my trash. So if they sold them by the roll at Market 32, that might be a different story if they don't do that. So, but now if we pass a drive-through, a drive-through bylaw, we can open the drive-through teller window at the...
Right, by your dumpster.
Yeah, by your sticker there through the drive-through.
And again, ultimately, we want to make them widely available throughout town. If, if, if the stickers are numbered, which is standard, you know, you can, you can keep your inventory pretty easily and sell a hundred to Zinkies, you know, or whoever, you know.
So, Mr. Lord, is that a motion to accept the concept and continue developing?
Yes, yes.
Is there a second motion?
Second.
The motion, second, promoted discussion?
So you're not going to be accepting check payment at the transfer station? Is that what I'm hearing?
The financial infrastructure necessary to do that in terms of bonding and turnovers and things like that seems kind of clunky. We can, you know, I know the highway department is not necessarily like Cassola, you're a great deal, but it is right next door, and in the case of an emergency, they might be able to have a sticker or two available in case somebody was actually stuck without one.
If we're there.
So I'm, I'm hoping that we can have some available at the, at the highway station just in case we need them. But the goal is for people to be able to buy them in a lot of different places instead of just there, so...
Why don't I have them available at the transfer station? And not take any money?
Well, right, that's what the receipt.
Instead of going over and borrowing money?
So, so they'll, they'll be there, um, if you have a, if you have a receipt for them. So that's another way of doing it.
You can build up a digital economy, do it all online and show your stickers, you know, so.
Right, so there's a, in your smartphone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Motion second, any further discussion?
I would just recommend exploring that, how people are gonna pay for them, uh, potentially at the transfer station. I understand, I'm all on board with online payment, but I think there's some people who, um, may not be able to adapt to that or may not want to, for whatever reason.
I, you know, we could always, you know, get their information and send them a bill. You know, this is not a big town. But, you know, the inefficiencies of doing that are much less than the inefficiency of getting somebody mad at you for not being able to dump their trash.
More to discover as we continue to explore the operation.
Yeah, and, you know, if things work, we can continue them, and if they don't work, we can change them.
Uh, motion second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'll make this other budget look like this budget for next week.
That's great, and thank you for the great exploration on that. It's not easy.
If you don't have all the information, so, I mean.
No, but we don't have all the information for the lot.
Right, but you still, I don't think, you know, you can agree to go ahead with this. You can always, this budget is not completed by then. We can bring it up at the, the, uh, town meeting in June.
We can, uh, it's a possibility. Um, it, it's, it's probably good to have something in place. I, well, we'll get to the discussion about June later. I'm, I'm, I'm hoping to get it done in one.
Is there a motion to open as a SOR commission? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approve of SOR abatement for one-seventy-four Depot Street.
So moved.
You all set, bud, or?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, bud.
Yeah.
Have a good night.
You too, thanks. Uh, Mr. Anderson?
Uh, these were recommended by the assessors. They're, they're simple abatements that were, uh, examined and found, um, found notorious, and they're asking for your approval.
Great. Is there any motion for one-seventy-four Depot Street?
So, I make a motion to approve the abatement for one-seventy-four Depot Street.
Your second?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve the abatement for thirty-nine Closer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
And close the SOR commission.
Second.
Motion second, close, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, number fifteen, the bargain APR land, possibility of leasing farmland and maintaining the town forest.
Yes, uh, this came up last time, and, uh, we were reminded that we had not had a formal discussion about it or a vote on it. And, um, and so it's, uh, for formal discussion and vote now. A thing, discussion and vote.
This is the work that you did with the state agencies, kind of look at the land and clarify what we can do, can't do.
Yeah, the town took, uh, land for tax purposes. It is under the agricultural preservation restriction program, which, um, requires its, um, agricultural use. Um, the, uh, I did have the idea that the, coming from Conover, the town did lease, um, agricultural land. It was the town's. That it could be a source of non-tax revenue for the town. I'm always looking for non-tax revenues. That's the basis for my, uh, exploring this. And, uh, they agreed that, um, if we, if we leased the tillable portion of the land to a farmer, that would satisfy the purposes of the APR. If we also maintained the forest as a town forest. As you may know, that, um, forestry is also under the U.S. Department of Agriculture. It's considered an agricultural, uh, function. So, uh, that, that then cleared the way for, um, trying to get some, of the non-tax revenue. And, um, we're ready to move forward with it if you are ready to move forward.
Okay, well, I'm not. I mean, I didn't get a chance last time because member of the board needed more information, and I definitely could identify with that. And I was just starting, the same I was gonna say when that happened, that motion was tabled. That was on December ninth. It was supposed to be tabled till the January ninth, but here we are now in March. Uh, I have a, uh, Dan, will you pass these down to the board?
Sure.
Two, three or four there. One for the town manager. I, I don't agree with this concept at all. I've been through it a lot of times. I think I got a good handle with the manager. Just give one to the Alicia. What Tom has proposed is leasing land. And it'll bring in a small, undetermined amount of revenue. There's the leasing proposal, which is in the middle of the page. The pro, it will bring in an undetermined steady stream of income for the town. That's it. Reasons against it? The cons, no apparent demand to lease. Lease will require extensive negotiations and legal expenses. Site will still be off the tax rolls. Town is still liable. And, and that particular issue, you saw what our liability for insurance, uh, budget was, one-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand. Lease will require oversight and management. Six, a municipal governmental body should not be in the real estate business. And seven, this is according to the local farmers that surround the property, only ten to fifteen percent of the land up there is tillable and, and is centered on the partial south of Route Nine, the one we used, we considered several years ago for a football field. Now, the sale of the property, according to, uh, according to, uh, the minutes of the meeting on, uh, two-twenty-four, twenty, nineteen-twenty, or twenty-twenty, excuse me. The board voted. Bob Bishop was the chairman, was the vice chairman. I made the motion. Bob enhanced it by setting a designated price of a thousand dollars per acre. We discussed the price, and then we voted unanimously to sell the property. I, for some reason, that's never been followed through with. So, and it courageously stands, because all you have to do is engage the town, uh, treasurer to activate their role as custodian of tax title property. Now, the pros of selling this property. One, it's in private hands. Two, it's on the tax rolls. It would generate approximately ten thousand dollars a year per annum. As an estimate, but an estimate I got from the assessors. Three, no longer needs liability insurance. Four, will immediately generate one-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars less expenses for the town of Dalton. Five, town will no longer be in the real estate management business. Six, successful bidder will deal with this section in Windsor. And seven, the select board has already voted to sell this property. And I don't want to be pointing the finger or playing the blame game like we did. And we did do that with the, uh, highway issue, and we're not gonna deal with now. But that order is voted by, voted by this board. That was our determination, um, based on the advice from the then-town manager, Ken Waldo, and I have that here somewhere. Barton Bar, that is. This is at the, uh, two-twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty meeting. Waldo gave the backstory to Barton's history of the town. Blah, blah, blah. Options include selling the land as a option to the rise by the town attorneys at the time. We own it, we can sell it. Nobody can tell us different. The APR always says, well, it's supposed to be for agricultural use. That's what it's gonna be if we sell it to a neighboring farmer. I don't understand what their problem is, and this has been going on for several years. But options include selling the land as it is and deal with the consequences. Two, ask the state legislature to change the preservation label or file a formal request with the Dalton Department of Agriculture to change the APR and appeal. Uh, Jay Boyle states that the appeal will most likely be opposed. Our bishop believes in selling it will put the land to good use. They are mis, they are misunderstanding our attempt is, this is Bob, to put it back into use agricultural use. Leaving the land sitting keeps it further from agricultural use, as it has for the last five or six years. Uh, Waldo refers to the treasurer's manner for, manual for information on selling it at a treasurer's auction. For example, a median range would be a thousand dollars per acre. It should be based on the higher value prior. Jay Diver states that we should look into the prior H, E H value. And if it doesn't sell, we, uh, Ed Holling, E H, states then, if it doesn't sell, then we can just have another auction. Great insight by Ed. Waldo shares that sealed bids are another option too. Jay Boyle moves to establish a minimum price of a thousand dollars an acre for the pending sale of Barton property. E H seconded, Ed Holling, seconded, all were in favor. Per Bob R Bishop's inquiry, Waldo applies that the money would go into the general fund but can be appropriated out for specific use. And we're looking at a significant amount of money here, right up front for a sale, one-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars. And then the tax revenue every year, away from the liability, the management, the, uh, anything else that covers that land now. In return, if we lease it, what do we get? An undetermined stream of money. Oh, one other thing. Inside the thing there, see? Right now, that land that's, uh, yeah, it's right down here. According to the nearby farmer, the only tillable land is the, of the one-hundred-and-forty-eight acres is the four-acre parcel south of Route Nine. It's at the right going up. It's a four-acre parcel that we own. The other ones are on the north side of Route Nine, on the hillside. And, uh, that tillable property, right now, uh, generates two-hundred bales of hay. At a five-dollar per bale cash price, uh, bringing in the potential owner a thousand dollars.
John, who's the local farmer? Is it Dick and Crane that you've been talking to?
Uh, I can't use anybody's name, but no, more than him, I did talk to him. Amy Mizani, uh, Paul Nichols, and Jeff Moody.
I think it, am I wrong when I say, I think the reason why I did get sold is because the town attorney had his plug right up at the last minute, right?
Because they weren't sure about the dangler that's in Windsor.
Right.
And as I posed in a hypothetical question to a potential bidder at this meeting only a couple of months ago, by the way, it's the third time he's come in here, expressed his interest. I says, hypothetically, would a successful bidder be able to deal with the dangler thing that extends into Windsor? He says, absolutely. He probably knows because he lives in Windsor. That's Mr. Crane.
Yeah.
He actually, many people think he lives in Dalton, he lives in Windsor. Now, what else here? Oh, the, the town forest issue. I don't know how to say this, Tom, but we sold the town forest. It was sold to the Department of Fish and Wildlife several years ago. One hundred acres for one-hundred thousand dollars. And that's, the town forest was just north and east of this property, so. The only thing I can say is, we had to stay our course, go through with the sale and take the money and get out from under it. And you had the advice of any businessman or a member of the community, that's what they would advise you to do. This board do, and that's what this board did. After, Mike, I apologize, you weren't at that meeting.
Do you think, and, and just because they represent us, going back to the town attorney and having them look at that just to make sure we can sell it? Because I just think if we're gonna repost it and then, I think we're gonna get the okay of the town attorney, because that's our plan.
Yeah, Jim, Jim Waldo got it one time. And, you know, he can strip away all the crap from the Department of Agriculture. They don't want you to do anything. You own it, you can sell it.
But I think.
I thought the sticking point was that dangler legally.
That was a.
That was, that was the direction I went through, to say, let's clarify this with the agencies, what we can and cannot do. Because I think that's, that was, you know, the issue.
It was, the issue was the part in Windsor.
Right, we couldn't, we couldn't disconnect from that because we took that over in the APR because of that non, non-tax.
Yeah, but we're selling it, we're selling the part that's in Windsor too. We own it.
That's not part we're selling, though, is it?
Yeah, the whole, yeah.
Was that in your proposal for the leased part, Tom, the Windsor part?
I don't, I don't think so. John, I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Because we would have sold it a long time ago.
Yeah.
The prop, the hangup is we don't own that little five-acre piece up in.
Yeah, we do own it.
That's the problem.
Yeah, but we have a right to sell it, we own it.
Not according to the state agency.
We don't.
Yeah, well, the state agency doesn't want you to do that. But they can't prohibit you from selling it.
They can, because you gotta sell it as a whole.
Yes, everything has to go at once.
But we don't own the five acres in Windsor.
Yes, we do.
I, I don't think we do, that was the issue.
Under the contract, that was the book, with the, with the family that owned both the Dalton side and Windsor side, there's a contract, I think it was a value of two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars, if I remember the number correctly. And which is both sides of that parcel that was in that contract and contractually obligated to stay as APR land. And that's the issue. So that's what we're going to the agency to say, how can we get value out of this mess? Because we can't disjoint them.
Right.
And the only value that Tom has done with your analysis, from understanding the bones and ball crack, because I, I remember that being, uh, John, you're absolutely correct. Um, the only value we get is to then lease that land because we can't subdivide it per the APR. But we get value out of that section of Dalton or the whole thing. I, I, I'm trying to follow the bones and ball from a leasing perspective, because we can't separate it from the sales process. And we can't include both.
Obviously, I'm in favor of selling it. If you think it's, if, are you thinking it's a legal question?
I'd be in favor of selling it.
Okay, but maybe we should recheck with the attorneys.
That, that's what I was.
Okay, I agree.
Yeah.
We make, you guys, Jimmy, present the question the right way. Can we sell this property?
If, if we can sell and get one-hundred-and-forty-eight, well, whatever the number is, absolutely. Yeah, but I think that was the sticking point, is that we could. But Tom, what, what's your assessment thus far of the conversation?
I wasn't around for those earlier discussions or the earlier legal analysis. But they are concerned, and in fact, the, the Department of Agricultural Resources no longer allows APRs to be in more than one pack. And say, uh, and something that, I think this, this may be like the only one in the state or something like that. Uh, and that's why it was very difficult to figure out how to go forward. And I'll, I'll just note that leasing was not one of the options that was discussed earlier.
No, it wasn't.
So, you know, it's, I still say it's a valid option. No, I, I don't know how much it would bring. I, I think there is more. I have spoken to a farmer who indicated that, um, although the area on the other side of the road has been growing up over the last few years, and it would take some work to bring it back to a tillable condition, it, it is potential farmland, and, uh, the farmer was interested in it. So, um, I think there's more than just the, uh.
A local farmer?
The, the, yes.
Hmm, good.
Oh, yeah. So I, I think there's more than just that, that other, that other person.
So, so was the right thing, John, to kind of ask for a legal opinion, what our legal options are, and then?
Well, I think we should just say, point blank, yes or no? Can we convey this property to an individual at an auction? If the answer is yes, we go ahead with the sale. If the answer is no, you can't do that. Well, then we're stuck with it.
Well, and, and it was, that was my impression, so that's why I went forward with this option.
Yeah, that's the time.
So I'm happy to check again.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to adjourn Tom to speak to the council regarding the merger of Harper and what our options are.
Okay, is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, motion second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The great work on this, Tom, and John, you're absolutely right for bringing up that past discussion, so, oh, yeah, it's, it's good.
You know, it's, well, it's kind of funny, I, Dawn's the, uh, what is it, what's her title? Custodian of, uh, tax title property, it's part of her job.
Yeah.
And I don't think she ever, this was ever passed on to her to take action. So consequently, nothing has happened in two years. It's been, it's over two years. That's unfortunate, but you gotta remember, the COVID was just starting up, the police thing, and-
I think we were at the one yard line, John, and the town, the town attorney said, no, 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 don't do that.
Yep, that's my response. It was all set.
Yeah.
And it was all cleared and, I don't know if it was the town attorney, or an attorney that was happened to be there, or, I'm not sure who it was. I, I didn't go to the thing myself.
Somebody made the one yard intersection.
Yeah.
Let's, we got a lot to go through, could we go to Tom, the draft warrant?
Sure. This is very much a first draft. Some things in it, one thing in it that certainly already changed. In Article One, which is, which is only there because we had something else as Article One, and I left all the other numbers the same, and I was left with something to throw into Article One, so I made that a transfer station. But it turns out Sandy is suggesting that we use, instead of fifty-three E and a half, just fifty-three E, which is a different kind of special revenue fund. It's not a revolving fund. So that's, that's the only change in that. The next, all the way up through Article fourteen, are the standard financial articles that I just copied and pasted and changed the year soon on. And, and of course, this is the warrant and not the motions and explanations, which I'll go, I'll go through later. Then I had the, the two planning board bylaws and the conservation commission bylaw. As you heard from Grant, the text of the planning board bylaws isn't ready yet, so it's not in here. But it should be by the end of the week.
If, I just say something about Article, which one is the, which one's the A D U one?
Fourteen, fifteen.
Fifteen? Yes. They're going to meet tomorrow night and finalize it. The other two are pretty well set. The drive-in and the wet, in the wetlands thing. But this one is, it, it has evoked a lot of public comment regarding putting in safety measures to protect neighbors and the general public by making this a special permitted, special permitted issue. Now, I wonder if the board is willing to give an opinion on that issue so we can transfer it to the planning board so they can use it in what they term their final deliberations tomorrow night.
I don't think we should, I don't think we should take a position on it because they've had their open meeting, they're a separate independent board.
Yeah.
And we shouldn't have, we, we've had a say at the open meeting.
And I think the proposed bylaw language was, was presented in one of the previous agendas of this select board where we had an opportunity as a board to do that. And it's not specifically on agenda tonight either. But, I mean, if-
I mean, and when it comes up at the town meeting, anybody can voice an amendment to the bylaw.
That's true too. Yeah, they're definitely looking for every, every board's and everybody's opinion, so. All right, okay.
And so the second sheet from the end, it picks up the, the second sheet from the end, with Article eighteen, that's again, saying if the town will authorize a lease. If it turns out we can sell it, this has, this would change to see if the town will authorize the sale. Because whichever we do, the town has to authorize it, any, any transfer of real estate. So it'll lead to a lease or sale. Article eighteen for the board and the property. Article nineteen is revoking its acceptance of civil service for the town, something that's supported strongly by the police department here for reasons of recruitment. Hi, Mary. Article twenty is, and I'm not sure that de-authorized is the word, but it's working for now, we'll get input from town council on that. I have forwarded this to town council. There are five items that we have authorized borrowing for, that we've completed the purchase of, and therefore there's excess authorization. That results in an overextension of where we ought to be in terms of our overall authorization. If we bring that down, that will improve our financial position.
Makes sense.
Pretty dry, but also pretty useful. Article twenty-one is the highway cemetery capital requests. Article twenty-two is the police department capital requests. I actually, Article twenty-three is the forest warden capital request. Remember, that was, he presented in his budget that he wanted some equipment, and it totaled about thirty thousand dollars. People thought, well, maybe that should be presented as a capital request. Article twenty-four was if we went forward with the lease of the Barton property, we would need a forest stewardship plan for the forest part of it in order to satisfy the Mass Department of Agriculture's requirement that we be managing the property. Article twenty-five is an initiative of mine to see if the town will fund and account for providing the town match for grants. This is particularly useful for grants from the Mass Office on Disability, which are advertised fairly late in the season and require a forty percent match of its half. We are in the process of having B R P C do a self-evaluation and a transition plan for compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Once they do that, we'll have a list of projects with costs that we can start to check off as we make the town more, more accessible. And the Mass Office on Disability is the prime place to get grants for doing that. And again, don't pay sixty percent of the cost. The problem being that we won't be able to know what the costs are, or we won't be able to apply for a grant until mid-year, when town meetings already happen. Rather than go back and have a special town meeting to authorize a town match for a grant, it'd be handy to have something, and I'm proposing twenty thousand dollars as seed money in this grant, that if something came along that needed a match, I could say, hey, we have a match for that grant. And then replenish it at the next town meeting. That's, that's the plan for that. Article twenty-seven is dissolving the Dalton Development and Industrial Commission as discussed earlier. Article twenty-eight is a request to amend a previous authorization to borrow for rewiring the I T system of Town Hall to include the additional authorization of connecting with fiber optic cable and related equipment, the Town Hall, Senior Center, Highway Department, Cemetery Office, and Pine Grove Park facilities, with a loop of fiber optic cable. All of the town functions in, more or less in the center of town can be connected, share information much more efficiently, share drives without going through a V P N.
The authorization of the two hundred thousand was directly related to a cybersecurity audit that we did, that we had gaps in our security.
Yeah.
So I'm not satisfied those gaps are closed yet. I haven't seen a, a report come back. This was pretty our time, but that was the intent of it.
Okay, I think I may have seen that report somewhere.
It raised enough concerns that, this was my suggestion when we kind of looked at ballpark figures of how we need to upgrade systems and close those gaps.
Okay.
And I just haven't seen the outcome of that. So if those, those issues are closed, then sure. But I know that there's probably going to be a few people in the audience that were very interested in that topic as well. We just need to know what the status of that is.
Yeah, and I've been in more or less continual discussions with our I T consultant. And-
Yeah, so the next round.
Who's fairly confident about our current systems. But we certainly need more staff training and other-
Well, this was an audit, I believe, was completed by a third party.
Yes.
And not by our own conciliance. So we should have a third party review it, because we shouldn't have the fox watch the hen outside when it comes to cybersecurity.
And I'm remembering more about-
Not that the fox, but you can get the picture.
I'm remembering more about the study, or at least, and I saw a very brief slide deck about it that was not specific.
It had to go deeper.
I will dig in a little deeper to-
I just want to raise a question so we can get the right stats and the facts off.
Right, right.
Yeah, but we can leave that as it, but just, that we can bring that back, Tom, and-
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Yeah. And we did talk about that also in executive session, my attorney approved that because-
Oh, right.
Yeah.
It's a sure issue. Article twenty-nine is by petition. The residents of River Street Extension are asking that their section of road be accepted as a public way. Article thirty is by petition, a resolution in support of their shared amendment. And that's it, except for the, the election. There is a question on the ballot relating to eliminating civil service for the town. It has to be both a vote at town meeting and a ballot question.
Yeah, interesting.
So similar to if you're making a, an elected position into an appointed position, it has to be both a town meeting vote and a ballot.
Okay.
Yeah, so-
Tom, if it's voted out at the town election, both the town meeting and the town election, do you have any idea when it would go into effect?
It should go into effect immediately, or, well, it should go into effect, I guess technically, when the town clerk files the minutes of the town meeting with the attorney general or the secretary of the state's office.
Go in the, the near future, after the vote. It's not a, not a waiting period anymore.
Following this, I, I have a draft of a motions and explanations document. There aren't any numbers in it yet, or there are some numbers in it. The numbers that are in here may be good. The ones for Article Two, I just carried over from last year. But a lot of the other numbers are just X's because I haven't put them in yet. They're, some of them are still coming in, that sort of thing. But I'm very interested in people's, people looking at, especially the explanations, and, you know, letting me know if I actually explained it correctly.
And then we have a special education session a week before, the one before?
Yes.
Oh, that sounds good, special education.
Special session.
Special session, communication, educate, additional education.
Okay.
Information.
Informational session. Get laid.
So, so please do look at that. Try to keep them all short and clear and explanatory. Some of them are, a lot of it's copy and paste from last year for the financial articles, and those are a little bit more complicated.
Well, we all take a look at it between now and Thursday and send you comments if they're any.
Oh, between now and a month from now.
Okay, all right, okay.
This is, this is, you know, this doesn't come out right away, so we can tweak it.
I'll take a month.
Yeah.
If we had this special information session, we should have the people here, such as the chairman of the planning board.
Absolutely.
Chairman of Conservation, you should, those people that you speak with expertise.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. Just want to solidify that date and get that announcement out.
That's September, that's April twenty-fifth, right? That's, is that it?
Yeah, is that April twenty-fifth?
Monday.
At seven thirty. And we're having a strike board meeting at six thirty. Got it, we have something like that.
All right, let's move to the town manager update.
Sure, thank you. Most of my work over the past week has been on the items on tonight's agenda. That said, I'll be meeting with the Highway Association on including summer hours in their contract, as was very well suggested last time. The Highway Superintendent does not expect the issue to be problematic. We have, as you heard from Pat, finally started our moves in preparation for the Town Hall renovation project, which seems more and more simply like an asbestos abatement project. The assessors and collectors have moved across the street to the old Berkshire Bank building, so if anyone has any business with them, they're open and ready just across the street. In less welcome news, apparently we could also do some asbestos work on the second floor. Since it's not an immediate problem and we're not prepared for second floor work, I've directed that the current project proceed as planned. Still, we may have further work to do over the next few years. Oh, and Pat alluded to the third floor offices needing work. That's also an asbestos-related issue where the walls are not in good condition and they are made of the old plaster. I have put extra work into the Division Road Request for Proposals, which is almost ready, and I have also asked Mayor Tyers' office for a statement in support of the project. She's checking with their D P W supervisor, and the office, I think, hopes to have something within a week in time for the M P O.
That's what, it's one, can't be checked twice a year.
Yeah. The Walker Brook Hydrology Project is progressing, and we will be filing a quarterly report as required later this month. The work is scheduled to be completed August thirtieth, at which time we can make a decision and seek funding for construction, or present different options for moving ahead. Proposals for working with our assessors over the next fiscal year are due Thursday. We've received one bid so far from a well-known firm. And I've been working with the emergency management director on various updates to the town's emergency preparedness, including a continuity of operations plan. An excellent thing to have, one that is often neglected, and our current E M D A has put in a lot of time on making it good. And again, you've not received the D E I C budget, except one that is zero funded, because it is zero out based on the intent to dissolve it. I plan to pay the Chamber of Commerce and Berkshire Business Bureau dues out of my own budget for F Y twenty-three, and see how that goes. We may eventually give it to the town planner. But both of those budgets have already gone through, so I'm just going to absorb it for now. And that's, that's the, the other thing, besides the things that-
Okay, thank you, Susha. Any questions for the town manager?
Yeah, just to, you're gonna, you're gonna ask the mayor of Pittsfield to write a letter in support of the Dalton Division Road project?
Because it does affect many residents of Pittsfield, yeah.
Everybody's doing it here, we're all doing something this week. Joe, you still plan on going to the city council and ask them, like, sharing the costs?
Uh, sharing the costs, I haven't had that conversation with them yet.
Oh, well, you plan to?
Yeah.
Is that it?
But I, I don't know how that's gonna fold into the planner right now, so I think that's the big question.
Yeah, but I think it's, it's well worth pursuing, seeing, the debt nearing is going to be approximately a million and a half. And if, in my own personal investigation, I think there is every conceivable argument you can make for them being involved in this because I think now it actually benefits Pittsfield more than it does Dalton.
Yeah.
All the, if you look at, into all the utilities, the water, it's a real mess down there.
Yeah, I think their answer's gonna be no, just because we haven't asked them in the beginning. But, but my appeal is going to be through kind of an A R P A kind of conversation.
With what?
A R P A. The A R P A funds that they've received, what, forty million dollars?
And we found?
Forty-three.
Forty-three million dollars, take a small sliver of that.
I tell you what to do, but you also should maybe give a heads up. And there's two guys in other names, Councilman that represents Dalton Vision Road.
Yeah.
Well, okay.
Yeah.
Give a heads up that you're gonna do this. Bring a link to your side.
Yeah, yeah, I, I just haven't had the chance to have a- Yeah, yeah, I just haven't had the chance to have a direct conversation with Pete Marquette yet, I know he had a death in the family, so I'm just kind of, you know, waiting for another time.
And the commissioner of public works at Ricardo Marrelli's.
Yeah, I think that's where the mayor's going, is to Ricardo, right? Yeah, yeah, so that's going to be a, so we've got TAC tomorrow on the 15th and MPO the 22nd. It looks like when they're minutes that we're still kind of at that top threshold, but still that five-way tie, so we'll just kind of work this through this process, but yeah.
I'm pretty close to all those people down there.
Yeah.
They still fully support the Dalton project.
Yeah, I mean, that's great, maybe we can...
And they want to stand by it because they started it, or they programmed it into the federal highway money that comes in every five years.
Yeah.
And, but, again, if someone else had a better project in the...
There's a lot of competition.
But if they get together five allies on the MPO, make a motion to derail the funds, there's nothing the administration can do about it.
That's it.
And it's happened before.
Yeah, absolutely. Any future agenda items? I'll certainly give everybody an update on the TAC meeting next week, and the TAC meeting's tomorrow, so I'll give an update next Monday. Anything else?
Yeah, that's what I understand, the traffic commission approved, we were good with editing two crosswalks, flash lights on South Street, so they can, like something from the traffic commission that represented, we'll talk about that.
Melissa? Anything else? Any items not anticipated before the hours before the meeting? So remarks of the select board? Well, just one is congratulations to the Locomo Boys basketball team for their big win the other night, and they go into the final four in Worcester on Wednesday night, and they are competing against Randolph High, which my sister-in-laws went to, so it's a little family, you know, competition going on, so we'll see how that kind of shakes up. Excited to see that game on Wednesday night. Anything else? Okay, announcements. Dalton Police Department is reminding the citizens of Dalton of the winter parking ban, which is in effect from November 15, 2021, through April 15, 2022. There is no parking on streets between 1:00 AM to 6:00 AM. The following committees have vacancies and are looking for volunteers, the ADA Committee, the Beautification Commission, Dalton Cable Advisory Committee, Dalton Green Committee, Finance Committee, Stormwater Management Commission, Waste Management Recycle Committee. If interested, please reach out to town manager's office by calling 413-684-6111, extension 202. The next meeting is scheduled to take place on Monday, March 21st, so we're amending this to next Monday, 7:00 PM, same place, Senior Center?
Yeah.
Okay, with an option for Zoom participation.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we would, as such, I don't believe we need to.
Great, move to adjourn.
Yeah, just one last comment, just want to recognize Berkshire Eagle, Larry Carnes was covered, and then we also have Sabrina from I Berkshire, so thank you both for covering the information about Dalton. Very important to help us get that news out to our community, so thank you both. And with that, I wish you to adjourn a second, discussion, fair or none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Dalton, good night.